Welcome to the 5:30 PM, May 23rd, 2023 Presentation City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and request. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. We are on special recognition and presentations. The first item under 4A is to recognize Officer Simmons of the Titusville Police Department as the City of Titusville's Employee of the Month for May 2023, Chief Lau.
Mayor and Council, it is truly a privilege to be able to recognize Officer Zachary Simmons. This is Employee of the Month of March, I believe, because I hope it was, because that's when the incident occurred. But we had an intelligence bulletin that goes out to all of our officers to be on the lookout for, you know, various things. This happened to have been string of burglaries, and Officer Simmons was right on it. And the description was a pretty, pretty good description of a white pickup truck. And, you know, so we were out and about looking for it. Turns out, the bad guy kind of got smart and spray painted his truck black. So now the, now the, the description had changed. But when you do that, it's actually comes a little bit more distinct. And Officer Simmons and his squad, they were going out and about looking, and he wasn't going to give up, and he just kept on it, kept on it. Finally, got in behind the vehicle that matched the description, who ducked into a house, which is a common tactic that's used. And he was able to get out, detain him for our detective unit to come by. And when it was all said and done, multiple, multiple burglaries closed, all by confessions, and a lot of stolen property was returned. In addition to that, Zach is a true pleasure to have around. He came to us, actually, he wasn't even old enough to be a sworn police officer at the time, so we had him in a training program, which is actually going to be a pilot program for our new recruiting, and who he said he, I would love to be part of the recruiting and getting people. So it is truly an honor to recognize Officer Simmons. Congrats.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I want to make sure we get this on the microphone. Another example of why you guys and this guy are my heroes. I say at every chance I get to speak, anybody who runs to the danger and not away from the danger are my heroes. And I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate the heck out of you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager.
Onto item 4B in our continuing series of department spotlights. Tonight's spotlight is the City Clerk's Office.
My name's Wanda Wells, and we have a video in the back that they're going to showcase our department, the City Clerk's Office.
The term clerk is an ancient and honorable one. Today, the city clerk continues to play an important and exacting position in local government. The office is also usually the first stop for citizens and others seeking information. Being a city clerk requires professional education in a variety of areas and legal responsibilities. Our city clerk and the assistant city clerk hold the Master Municipal Clerk designation through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Each also maintains membership and participates in continuing education through the Florida Association of City Clerks. In the area of public records management, our professional records managers maintain memberships and continuing education through the Florida Records Management Association for the Florida Certified Records Management Designation. So what does the Titusville City Clerk's Office do? Comprised of nine employees, five full-time and four part-time. The City Clerk's Office has three distinct functions governed by the City Charter, City Code of Ordinances, and Florida statutes. The three functions include administer the legislative process, facilitate public participation in governmental processes, protect and manage the public record. In addition, the office is a support department to the city's other departments, many of which have an intertwined relationship with the City Clerk's three distinct functions. The office also staffs the information desk at City Hall and switchboard telephone, as well as provides mail courier services to the entire municipal organization, administer the legislative process. Here, the City Clerk's Office provides public notice of city council meetings and workshops, and prepares the city council agenda at the discretion of the city manager, attends all city council and CRA meetings, and keeps the meeting minutes, attests the signatures required on newly adopted ordinances, contracts, and other documents approved by the city council, to which the city clerk also sets the city seal. Concerning ordinances, the office maintains the electronic and paper book volumes of the city's active and current code of ordinances approved by the city council. Other terminology used for the code of ordinances includes codes or local legislation or local laws. For further clarification, an ordinance is a formal authoritative legislative action taken by the city council to enact general and permanent local law for the community. Ordinances cannot conflict with Florida statutes, the state constitution, et cetera. On a separate matter, ordinances are not the same as resolutions. A resolution is generally not legislative and may state a position or policy, or deal with matters of a special or temporary character, which also require the city council's approval. Back to the city's codes, the city's code of ordinances or codes are viewable on the city website, which includes notice of newly adopted ordinances, and a link to our codification vendor's website, Civic Plus Municode. The city's online code volumes are updated quarterly as a cost-saving measure, whereas more frequent uploads are more costly. This is comparable with other cities. Facilitate public participation in governmental processes. Here, the City Clerk's Office facilitates public participation at city council and CRA meetings, provides public notice and legal advertising on upcoming public hearings on proposed ordinances, land use and rezoning amendments, land development applications, right-of-way and easement vacations, variance and appeal requests, historic designations, and much more. The office also oversees appointments of citizens who desire to serve on the city's volunteer advisory boards. Those who do are recommended to contact the City Clerk's Office. This is a great way to serve the community. Our staff also serves as liaisons to the Student Advisory Council and Titusville Community Service Award. In addition, the City Clerk conducts municipal elections of the city council. The state recognizes the role of the City Clerk as the municipal filing officer for the municipality, election procedures and laws for city council candidates, and the city are governed by Florida statutes, chapters 97 through 106, as well as the city charter and code to run for office. Eligible citizens must submit forms and other articles to the City Clerk that are required by the state. Some of the articles include an oath indicating a citizen is eligible to hold public office, financial and bank depository disclosures, fees, et cetera. The required forms and articles must be submitted to the City Clerk during the city's qualifying period during an election year. Candidates must file a schedule or series of complete financial activity reports throughout the election process. Further, the City Clerk must provide the candidate's names to the Brevard County Supervisor of Elections to include on the voter ballot. Later, and upon receiving the official election results from the county, the City Clerk with the mayor transmits the official results to the city council, who must canvass the results of the city council election. Protect and manage the public record. This is an extensive area regulated by Florida statutes, state law, and city policy that affects the entire municipal organization. Here, the City Clerk's Office protects, manages, and provides security for public records entrusted to the office, per state retention schedules, electronic image requirements, exempt and confidential rules, and storage and destruction policies, responds to public records requests, which often require extensive time, research, collaboration, and redacting exempt or confidential information that may be contained within the requested records. Florida statutes provide more than 1,000 exemptions for information that may be exempt, not eligible, from public inspection. Next, digitizing paper records into the city's electronic records management database, Laserfish, is a high priority in the city. This enables all city departments to scan, import, retain, and manage electronic records rather than paper. Presently, Laserfish houses over 3.5 terabytes of data comprised of millions of records, which grows by thousands each day. The office also implements record scanning and digitizing initiatives with other city departments when time and budget allows. Our staff also assist other city departments with Laserfish, creating user accounts, setting detailed security by user, providing training and access to training resources. In addition, the City Clerk's Office houses files at the city's record center containing 2,000-plus cubic feet of records in a variety of formats, including paper, microfilm, and more. The organization of the record center is quite impressive, so much so that other cities have asked to complete onsite visits. Further to protecting and managing the public record, the City Clerk's Office also oversees the administrative policy on public records, collaborates with other departments to provide new employee training on Florida statutes and public records policies, publishes records management bulletins to assist all departments and city staff in their responsibilities to protect and manage the public records in their care and custody. Finally, we hope you have enjoyed this overview on the Titusville City Clerk's Office and information on our functions and responsibilities. The office seeks to continually improve our processes and to be known for the exceptional value we bring to others each and every day by providing high-level service and care to all for information, public records, research, public participation, and administering the legislative process.
Well, very nice. Let's go. Every time I get one of those presentations, it just reminds me how much you do that I don't know you do. So thank you for the presentation, Council. Anything on that? Well, with that, again, thank you for all you do, not just the presentation, but what you do every day. And again, I'll have to come around and see the next presentation and remember what I forgot you do. All right, City Manager.
Onto item 4C, which is Olivia Eskindell, the Conservation Manager for Restore Our Shores Program with Brevard Zoo, will give a presentation on the Brevard Zoo Pilot Seagrass Restoration Project.
Do you guys want me to stand here or use a clicker over there?
I would say the clicker, but yeah.
Is it the clicker?
We get confused. We have an IT guy, and it's not me.
Okay, well, hopefully it works.
Okay.
Well, thank you guys for having me here today. My name's Olivia, and I'm a conservation manager at the Brevard Zoo, which means that I have the best job in the world, and I get to play in the lagoon outside of the zoo. So I help to protect and restore the wildlife outside of the zoo. So why is a zoo so involved in conservation anyways? First, I want to ask, how many of you guys have been to the Brevard Zoo before? Probably all of you, that's usually the case. And how many people were around when the Brevard Zoo was first opened or helped? So thank you, guys. There's usually a couple people in the room who helped start the zoo, but we were actually started by volunteers. So the Brevard Zoo holds the world record for the largest community zoo build. So that means that people who lived in this community came together. There was a roadside attraction that was closing, and what are we going to do with these animals? And they came together and literally built exhibits at the zoo that are still there today. We've grown a lot since then, but the moral of the story is the community is really at the heart of the Brevard Zoo, and our mission is to share our joy of nature, to help wildlife and people thrive. So, you know, next to connecting the community with nature at the Brevard Zoo, we also work with different animals outside of the zoo. So probably a lot of you are familiar with our sea turtle healing center. So we see over 200 sea turtles every year, and that's not even including hundreds of small hatchlings that we usually see as washbacks. So that's at the Brevard Zoo. We also have captive breeding programs for a couple endemic species to Florida, and that includes the Perdidokey beach mice and the grasshopper sparrow. And we are also getting more involved in manatee rescue and soon-to-be rehabilitation. So we'll be adding an acute care facility for manatees at the Brevard Zoo. And some of you are probably also familiar with our aquarium project that will be going in at the port, and that will hopefully be a critical care facility for manatees, too. So, you know, we work with all these different species, and our goal is to answer the call for Florida's local wildlife. And a big call right here in our own backyard is the Indian River Lagoon. So we have several different community-based restoration projects. We work with oysters, clams, different native shoreline species like mangroves and some other grasses and flowering plants. And we're also getting into seagrass restoration. So we're really, we work very closely with Brevard County Natural Resources through a half-cent sales tax to restore oysters throughout the lagoon, to improve water quality and remove nutrients. And then we also received funding, or received funding, from St. John's River Water Management District to restore clams to the Indian River Lagoon as well. But today, I'm going to focus more so on a pilot seagrass restoration project that we've been conducting over the last month. So due to poor water quality and mostly poor water quality, we've lost in some places of Brevard County over 90% of seagrass coverage since 2011. 2011, there was a large super bloom of a brown tide bloom that occurred in the Indian River Lagoon that exacerbated poor water quality and reduced clarity so much that it really clouded out most of our big seagrass beds. And unfortunately, the seagrass has not been able to recover. So we see a little bit of recovery in some areas. I'm happy to say, especially in North Titusville, we do see some seagrass coming back, which is really, really promising, because in kind of central Brevard County or southern Brevard County, we don't see as much coming back. So with that said, you know, we really saw a call for seagrass restoration, and we have been working with the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program to construct a seagrass nursery in Melbourne Beach at the HUBS SeaWorld Research Institute property that's down there. So we will be growing our own seagrass. Here's a photo of some of our helpful volunteers helping us to construct that nursery, and we're hoping to start growing seagrass there this year. So we're really excited, because there are really only a few nurseries in Florida that grow seagrass. And we're thankful to have partnerships with those nurseries as well, who are helping us along the way and showing us the ropes, as this is something really new for us. But we're excited to be engaging volunteers in helping to propagate these restoration materials and resources. And this month, we've actually planted at 16 different sites throughout Brevard County in the Indian River Lagoon, small experimental pilot seagrass plantings, so that we can learn more about where restoration is ready. So are there areas in the Indian River Lagoon where the water quality in its current state is ready to see some recovery? So part of the reason we're not seeing so much recovery outside of water quality is also due to the fact that most of these seagrass species propagate just by rhizomal growth or having a storm come by and these fragments will settle in different places. They don't flower and seed as much as some other plants, which makes it really difficult if you've lost very large beds, they're just that source isn't there. So we know that we're not going to plant our way out of this problem, but we're hoping that some of these small planting projects can help to accelerate recovery. So this is a map of all of the sites that we have planted over this past month. There's one more that we're waiting on a final permit to be approved, and that's at Pine Island. So we've planted 16 of the 17. The green sites are just normal planting sites, and then the red sites also have continuous water quality monitoring. So we have a really in-depth monitoring procedure that we'll be using at these properties so that we can learn more and try to answer the question, if we lose grass or if grass does really well, why exactly that happened? So monitoring dissolved oxygen concentration, salinity, temperature, all the good water quality nerdy stuff.
Good stuff.
So I wanted to focus on the properties that we're working at in the City of Titusville city limits. So the map on the left side is a historic map of seagrass coverage in this part of the lagoon. So the blue is just open water, and then those green colors are large seagrass beds. So you can see there really was a lot of seagrass in this part of the lagoon. And these maps are created every two years by our friends at St. John's River Water Management District. They do aerial surveys with planes to find where these seagrass beds are, and they also monitor twice a year transects throughout the Indian River Lagoon, so actually in the water, monitoring the densities of these beds, so we get a really robust data set of what's going on. And then hopefully this works, but I have a video of a site. If you see that red star, the bottom-left red star, this video is taken at that site in 2009. So you can see how much seagrass really blanketed the bottom of the lagoon. And if you've lived here for long enough, you know that that's what the lagoon used to look like, but unfortunately, we don't see that. That last grass right there is my favorite, that's star grass. It's very cute, it looks like a little palm tree under the water. But those red stars, those are the four sites really close to Titusville where we have planted seagrass. And then we also have one site north of you guys up in Scottsmore as well, so pretty close. So just as a project overview, the planting portion of this project was funded by generous donors to the Brevard Zoo. And as I mentioned earlier, the nursery has been funded by the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program. The plantings were conducted in May, and we planted, actually, the correct, it's 2,200 planting units of Haliduli rhytei, or shoal grass, which is the most common species of seagrass that we have in this part of the lagoon, and is considered a pioneer species. So it grows faster than some of the others. It's also a little bit more tolerant to lower salinities and lower light. Probably most people are familiar with turtle grass or manatee grass, so those are really picky. So we actually don't have turtle grass really north of the Sebastian Inlet, but historically, we had a lot of manatee grass here, so I hope in the future we'll be able to restore more manatee grass as well, because the manatees do, it really is their favorite. But we focused on shoal grass for this project, and that's the species that we'll be focusing on in our nursery as well. These were small pilot plots, so they're not very large. Each plot is two meters by two meters, which is like six feet by six feet in US customary. But each plot, or each site, has five of those plots planted at them. Some of them even have 10. So we chose some larger sites where water quality was really good. This particular photo is from behind Parish Medical Center, and that's actually one of my favorite sites. It has nice, clear water, and there was two species, actually, three species of seagrass already present at the site, so we're hoping to increase the density there. And then that middle photo is a photo of what one of those planting units looks like after we've planted it. So beautiful, long blades of shoal grass. We did include herbivory exclusion devices, or just exclusion devices in general, on a portion of the project to help protect from herbivores like manatees or sea turtles, or there, I have seen firsthand different species of fish predate on seagrass, so manatees aren't the only problem. We also have a lot of stingrays out in the lagoon, and they like to make big pits. So, you know, as we talk in the community, I feel like there's a lot of victimizing manatees a little bit about that's the reason we've lost so much seagrass, and they're the ones eating it. But, you know, what I've seen firsthand working on these projects is there's a lot of other things that like to eat seagrass, too. So be careful about blaming the manatees. As I mentioned before, we will be monitoring these projects pretty in-depth, so our first monitoring was actually at two weeks, and then we'll be going back monthly for the next six months and doing a one-year monitoring as well. And we're engaging volunteers in all these projects as well. So if you're interested in coming out and helping us monitor, let me know. We can have a fun day out on the lagoon together, and you can see our seagrass. That top-left photo is another photo, or another picture of the seagrass planting units. So we used a landscape staple with several different fragments of the seagrass with their roots and the blades together, and then used floral wire to tie that around the landscape staple. And then we have a photo of one of the exclusion devices. So it's really, it's a four-inch by four-inch mesh, so we're really keeping out bigger things, not, you know, really small fish. But why is seagrass so important, other than the fact that we've lost so much of it? It really is the bottom of the food chain here in the Indian River Lagoon. This is a seagrass-based ecosystem, and it's essential habitat for many, many different species. It provides nursery space, and then, of course, forage for many species like manatees and sea turtles and the fish that I mentioned. It also helps to make our coastlines resilient. So if we have really robust seagrass beds, that can help buffer the waves that come in with storms and prevent erosion. And it also stores carbon, so... things, not, you know, really small fish. But why is seagrass so important, other than the fact that we've lost so much of it? It really is the bottom of the food chain here in the Indian River Lagoon. This is a seagrass-based ecosystem, and it's essential habitat for many, many different species. It provides nursery space, and then, of course, forage for many species like manatees and sea turtles and the fish that I mentioned. It also helps to make our coastlines resilient. So if we have really robust seagrass beds, that can help buffer the waves that come in with storms and prevent erosion. And it also stores carbon, so it's a carbon sink to kind of sequester that carbon, excess carbon that's in the atmosphere. So that is about it, but thank you guys so much for having me today, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And if you're an audience member and you're interested in volunteering with us or learning more about our programs, you can visit our Restore Our Shores website or follow our newsletter as well.
Well, thank, excuse me, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate the insight, and also I appreciate, because sometimes, not necessarily with this, but other items, if it's a South Brevard-based area, the zoo in Melbourne, the South Brevard area seems to get all the benefit. That clearly isn't the case with what I'm seeing here, and I appreciate that, that's something I can always look at. The second thing I was glad to hear was you feel like that the north area, for whatever reason, and hopefully there's some good efforts going on there helping that, we're having some success with the seagrass, more so than the central and south.
Yeah, so, you know, naturally recruited, I've seen more seagrass in this portion of the lagoon than, as I mentioned, that kind of central portion of Brevard County. And hopefully, I have more updates for you soon about survivability of the planting projects. My team was actually at Parish Medical Center this morning, monitoring the seagrass there, and they found almost a hundred percent survival after two weeks underneath the exclusion devices. There's a little bit less survivability outside of the exclusion devices, but that's to be expected, as we know herbivory can be a problem. So we're trying to learn, are there areas where there's so much seagrass around it that it's not as much of a problem, because it is extra permitting to put out those herbivory exclusion devices?
Thank you. Uh, Member Stokel.
Yep. Thank you for the presentation. Two things. One, do you think there's anything we can do to help speed up the seagrass as a council? And are there anything, is there anything else that we can do? It's always at the top of our goal list every time we go through it. It's what can we do to help the lagoon? We all are very passionate about the water, and sometimes it's challenging sitting here saying, what are things that are practical things that we can help in this process?
So that's a great question, and I think just continue moving forward on the path that you're on, you know? Water quality improvement projects will help bring seagrass back. So as I said earlier, we're not going to plant our way out of this problem. We could plant seagrass in a closet with no sunlight, and it's never going to work. So we need to continue to, you know, do stormwater upgrades that are treating stormwater before it enters the lagoon to remove nutrients, you know, different sewer upgrades, things like that, that will reduce the nutrient pollution into the lagoon to improve clarity. Because really, our problem is, in, for a long period of time, the lagoon was too dark for seagrass to keep growing. It's very stressful, you know? It lives not in the super, super shallows, kind of probably like a foot to two to three feet deep, and it can get really dark certain times of year when we have large algae blooms. So we just need to continue to focus on improving water quality, and I do believe that it will come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Member Nelson.
I have to say, after listening to you, I feel very hopeful.
Thank you.
So, I had questions. I know you were working on the oyster sun clams. How are they doing?
So we have done very few oyster projects in the city of Titusville or in kind of north IRL, because we had limited success at some northern projects with oysters early on. You know, that may not always be the case, but recruitment of oysters is very low in Titusville. So oysters grow on other oysters, they're what's called a gregarious species, so they like to have a party together, and they literally grow on other oyster shells. And so when we're looking for a site to restore oysters, we're really hoping to see that there are naturally oysters there already, just in fewer numbers, and they just need substrate. So they need more just shells to grow on, because not only did we lose oysters because of water quality issues, but also because of overharvesting. So as you harvest oysters, you're literally taking their home away with the oyster shells. So there are many areas where we've just are substrate limited, we just need more oyster shell in the water to create these reefs. In Titusville, there's very, very few oysters left, so it is difficult to have a project succeed unless you seed it very, very heavily. So we're hoping to maybe do some projects like that in the future, but those have had limited success nationally. So we may be able to kind of hopscotch our way up the lagoon, but it's going to take some time to build up those populations. We do have an oyster gardening program, so we work with volunteers who live along the lagoon, where we actually give them hatchery-raised oysters, and they grow them off their docks for us. So we do have several oyster gardeners in the city of Titusville, and those are filtering the water while they're here, of course. And we also did plant clams at several sites in Titusville. I don't have exact numbers, probably ten or twenty sites in kind of north Brevard. And we saw, and that was in fall of 2021, and we saw some exciting growth for the first several months, and then the summer months came around and we had lots of rainfall, and clams do not like low salinity. So the salinity dropped so low that we had very low survivability of those clam projects in the end. But I do think that there is more room to plant clams in the future, and there are some areas that we didn't try that may be higher salinity. So I hope that answers that question. Probably too detailed, but.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. So you are also monitoring the water quality in conjunction with planting the grass?
Yes. So we are monitoring the water quality every time we come out to visit the site, which is, that'll be like eight times in the year, but water quality can change like that, you know, in a couple of minutes. So we also have six sites throughout Brevard County where we're using continuous water quality monitoring equipment, so it's able to take a reading every hour. So we're getting a salinity reading every single hour, a temperature reading every single hour for the entire length of the project. So, yeah.
Was that also include nutrients, or is it salinity?
It's salinity, it does not include nutrients. That's a really good question. We are monitoring nutrient concentrations in the sediment at different sites, but we're not monitoring nitrogen or phosphorus concentrations. St. John's River Water Management District does monitor those concentrations at all the sites that they monitor seagrass at, but not on a continual basis. And I'm not sure how, you know, fine detail you need for nutrient concentrations. We're monitoring salinity, temperature, dissolved oxygen, water level, and light.
Okay. I got to say, thank you.
Thank you.
This was great.
Very good. Member Cole.
Yes, I really appreciate you coming, Olivia, because I heard your presentation at our parish board meeting. My question is twofold. One is, your funding sources, do you have government grants or is just through donor contributions?
So this planting project was special because it was through donor contributions. We don't have very many really big projects that are funded by donors, you know, little projects here and there, or little pieces of projects. But most of our projects are government grant-funded, so the oyster projects, the permanent oyster projects that we build in Brevard County, those are funded through the half-cent sales tax, so the SORL, Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan. The seagrass nursery is funded by the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, and that is actually long-term funding. So for the next five years, we'll be receiving funding to continue projects like this, which is really, really exciting, because in, you know, my line of work, we work on one-year grants a lot of times, and we lose funding to be able to continue to monitor projects, but having long-term funding like that, Dr. Duane de Vries, seeing a vision for the lagoon and seeing that we need to increase our capacity to restore seagrass and selecting five organizations like that is really, really exciting to be able to continue this work without having to chase another grant, so.
I said I had two questions, but you answered the second one.
Okay.
No, I, I want to try to get an idea of the duration of this, and you just said five years, and you probably need a.
And hopefully thereafter.
We need something like infinity.
Yeah. And, you know, we joke, but I do hope I'm put out of a job that we're not able to, you know, do restoration.
Maybe when you get to be my age.
Maybe, yeah, we'll see. There's probably always going to be something that needs our help at the zoo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I see nothing further. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for having me.
City Manager.
We're on to item 4D, which is the Economic Development Strategic Plan update. A presentation will be given on the status of the city's economic development strategic plan. This is an information-only item, no actions required. An action item will be on the city council's regular meeting at 6:30. Nicholas, all yours.
There we go. Hello. Council, good afternoon. Thank you for your time here. So I wanted to go over with you guys a quick update on our economic development strategic plan that was implemented and adopted in 2017. Through the course of these slides, my plan is to cover with you all not only the plan that was implemented in 2017, but also to give you a little bit more of an update on our current economic development environment that we're in today. So first thing, this plan was implemented, like I said, in 2017. We did have a consultant that come in and go through everything and put this together. What they based everything off of was the market analysis, an economic development assessment, and stakeholder input. The goal of this was to position Titusville to compete for investment against some of the other cities that are local to us, as well as to increase the tax base and generate more revenue here for the city, all while maintaining the community character that we do have and we try to preserve. Over the next couple of slides, I'm going to kind of go break things down from a macro to a micro level, so we'll start kind of at the biggest. But the first thing is there's, there's five main drivers when it comes to economic development, and these are typically the same across all boards, so this is land, capital, regulation, markets, and labor. These are the big drivers that drive economic development. So after that, what they end up doing is they broke down for us into five main areas of focus for strategies. So the five areas that they were specific on here for Titusville was economic development, capital projects and public improvements, residential development and quality of life, transportation and transit, and miscellaneous support strategies. So if I was to break this down and say that it was, to give an elevator speech for this plan, it would sound like preserve community character, history, and quality of life, enhance the community's aesthetics, market position, and connectivity, expose obstacles to investment and promote new opportunities, invest in the city's identity and image, public spaces and aesthetics, and to capitalize on the commercialization of space, market potential, and location. Some of the examples that were laid out in this strategic plan involved a parking garage, which had been mentioned in downtown, as well as the attraction of a hotel to generate more tourism, business assistance and incentives, and public economic and cultural investments. So now to get to kind of the smaller scale. So in the plan, there's, there's a detailed implementation matrix, and this has been attached for you guys to be able to review and go through as well. But the plan laid out a total of one hundred and six different strategies across all these categories, and approximately fifty-four percent of these strategies are complete or in the ongoing status. On each of the action items, you can see that they list the responsible department, any one-time costs associated with those, or any annual costs associated with those action items, as well as a deadline, duration, and the expected year of completion for each of those tasks. So now that I've kind of broken down a little bit of, you know, the plan that was implemented in 2017, I want to kind of transition to the, to progress to where we are today and what our current environment looks like. So our growth has been increasing year over year, and I'm going to go through a couple of slides here to show you where we are today and where we've came over the last couple of years since this was implemented. But our applications are consistently increasing, and there is no decline in the foreseeable future. Some of those logos probably look familiar to you guys, to you all. So we have, all of these are already currently in development and being built and close, they're moving very quickly. So this is a chart of the year over year new site growth that we have been experiencing since 2018. As you can see, we've been on a steady incline. And on the next one, I've broken it down by category for you guys to see the difference between each of the sectors. So we have commercial, residential, and industrial. Now, I just wanted to point out on the 2023, those numbers are current year-to-date through April. So as, as you see here, as far as commercial goes, for example, we've already exceeded the amount of commercial new site development that we had in 2018 to 2020. We've already hit the pace for 2021, and we still have plenty of the year to go. So the reason I wanted to bring this up is we're going to be coming to you guys, to you all, and asking for advice on what to do to move forward in the future. So there is a 10-year horizon that was put in place on this plan, so 2027 is the horizon year. So the three alternatives that we're proposing that we'll be asking for advice on are no changes or updates, updating it by extending the current horizon, or developing and adopting a new plan. That's everything I have for you, so I want to turn it over if you have any questions.
Still taking it. I see none. Council, any questions? There we go. Members Stokel.
Um, no, I don't think I have a question. Thank you for this, because I feel like some of us had gotten on council like 2016, right when this plan was coming, and if we remember back in that time, we were really pushing for some growth. And now I think, fast forward, we have a lot of growth happening. And so for me personally, I think we'll probably revisit, I'm thinking that we have a lot of residential, and I'm very afraid that we will lose some of that commercial to keep up with the residential coming. And so for me, just looking, especially as we're getting a lot of applications for land use changes, I really would feel more confident in knowing where our commercial and industrial spaces are, how can we market to them, to balance out a lot of the residential that's already here. So that's kind of where my vision is.
Yeah, and I would say that whenever I speak on the topic, it's very similar. Having been here since 1965, there are certainly some Titusville qualities that we don't want to lose due to growth, but at the same time, we do want to grow, and I hear from people all the time. Matter of fact, they'll throw out different restaurants they're still wanting to get.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not on the list yet.
So with that said, I do think it's a fine line, and it's a balancing act, and I don't ever want to forget where we have been and who we are, but I don't want to stop growing in the way the citizens want us to grow. It, it's a tough call. Anybody else up here? I think that's it. Thank you for the presentation. We'll see you again soon. City Manager.
Onto item 4E, which is transitional housing. The Community Development Department will present research from the city zoning regulations relating to transitional housing, including homeless, domestic violence, and emergency and protective shelters. No actions required. Mr. Parish.
Counselor, at meeting on April 11th, you had asked, or we had approved advisability for staff to do some research, and what I provided to you in your, your packet on page 96 and 97 of your packet, you'll see a two-page report, actually beginning on page 97 of your packet. So I'm just going to summarize what I gave you. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation. This is primarily information just for your benefit for, for discussion, and that we may come back to you at a future meeting for specific direction if you'd like us to do that. So basically, what we found was, based on a conversation we had from a property owner about trying to establish a particular use that would allow residents or people to sleep in the building, not on a permanent basis as a residential use, but more what, based on my research, seemed to be more of a transitional use. So we looked at the zoning districts that allow these types of uses, looked at some research from the American Planning Association and definitions, even looked at other communities to see if there was some kind of pattern. You didn't really see a pattern in this, but I just want to lay out to you exactly what our code says written related to these, these types of uses. So the first one here is on page 97 of your packet, you'll see that matrix there, zoning uses. You have four types of uses that seem, that are listed in our zoning code that seem similar to what was being presented. One is a neighborhood group home. That is a permanent residential use, is a type of use that is typically classified as what's called a community residential home. So the statute allows a single, a up to six non-related residents in a single-family home to be located in a single-family home, in a single-family subdivision, even in our single-family zoning districts, without any further regulations. They would just have to get a license basically from ACHA, the Agency for Healthcare Administration. That's not a transitional home. That is supposed to be considered as if it was a single-family unit. Same thing with a, up to fourteen residential units, or fourteen residents, rather, non-related in a multifamily setting. So that's also. So that's also could be considered a community residential home. That's already in the statute, already in the code. And that's allowed right now in various single-family and multifamily zoning districts. Another use that we thought was similar to what was being presented is what's called a recovery/halfway house. It does not specify in the definition the number of residents. We do not see that there was a license that would be required, at least as far as what our code says. The services provided, for example, would aid persons following a period of imprisonment, hospitalization, or institutionalized care. And that is specifically listed as a permitted use inside the downtown mixed-use zoning district. Another use that's also allowed in the downtown mixed-use zoning district is a domestic violence shelter, and that's actually not really defined in our code. But again, it's almost seems, based on my research, more of an emergency shelter, transitional-type housing in order to allow for someone to get to something more permanent. And then a fourth type of use that we saw in our code was something called a residential treatment facility. And that is also a use that is specified to be, that has to be licensed by the Agency for Healthcare Administration. That allows 15 beds or more, according to our code. It's allowed in a multifamily zoning district and also in our hospital medical zoning district. And that use specifically provides residential care and treatment to persons exhibiting symptoms of mental illness. And in those zoning districts, especially in the multifamily zoning district, that actually requires a conditional use permit. So it's not just a permitted-by-right use. On the next page, on page 98 of your packet, I'm just going to summarize what I have here. So again, those four uses are listed inside our code. You have neighborhood group homes. We do not believe that, again, that this use that's being presented is a neighborhood group home. The second use, residential treatment facility, again, that is allowed inside our three multifamily zoning district and in our hospital medical zoning district with a conditional use permit. The third use, recovery halfway house, is actually defined inside our code, and that, again, that's allowed in a downtown mixed-use zoning district, and is permitted by right, and is, I believe, that's closest to what is considered to be a transitional-type housing setting. And then inside that same paragraph, I put in domestic violence shelters, which are also, I believe, fall into that category of a transitional-type housing use, but it's not specifically defined in our code. It's just listed as a permitted use inside a downtown mixed-use zoning district. The last thing I want to bring up in my report here is about the fire code. And that's, a lot of these types of uses where you have several people staying or living or sleeping in one structure are going to have to adhere to whatever code requirements in addition to our zoning code and land development regulations, but also the Florida Building Code, and in this case, the fire safety code. And so our fire marshal has indicated that the uses that have been described here by the person who's petitioned to have this looked at in a particular property over in the west of the CRA in the urban mixed-use zoning district, and based on our research here, that there would have to be some kind of life safety system put into the building, some kind of fire suppression system. Now, this afternoon, I did speak with the applicant or the petitioner about this use, and I did have a lengthy discussion about this. And I also did follow up with another conversation with the fire marshal. And he was pretty adamant that this is going to be something that would be required. So even if this is something that you want to explore as maybe allowing this type of transitional-type housing in other types of zoning districts with conditions or whatever that might be, it would not negate the fact that they would still have to probably deal with the fire suppression system of some sort. Several other examples of these types of uses were identified to me in other parts of the city. I did some preliminary research on that, and each example that was brought up to me, it was similar to a multifamily apartment complex, which had a fire suppression system already. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this, and we can certainly bring this back to you for any particular reaction.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Brad. I understand about the fire suspicion, because that's the most difficult part to meet in the qualification process. But under the domestic violence shelter, I didn't hear you mention the security problems when you were dealing with a domestic violence shelter.
Sorry, what was the question?
About security, the security requirement, because when you're dealing with domestic violence, it mandates that you have a lot of, no one is supposed to know where it is. For one, it's supposed to be in a secret location or as secret as possible. And even on top of that, the security requirements, because of the nature of the, I'll use the word beast, but I don't see that that's mentioned anywhere in this particular process.
Yes, sir. That's something we can certainly explore more. Again, my research, transitional housing, there's different types. So a domestic violence shelter is really just one type, I would think, of a transitional housing. So if we're looking for specific, maybe allowing for a specific type of transitional housing, maybe that's something we should explore, or if we're allowing for something more broad, because what I found was it could also include a homeless shelter, which doesn't require any kind of licensing or security measures or anything else in that scenario. So, no, I did not explore that.
Okay, and I also heard that trying to identify transitional housing, you put a six-month time period on that? What is the definition of transitional housing as it's been described in this particular case?
I did not propose a particular timeframe, but I have seen, I mean, it's been mentioned to me that transitional housing, a homeless shelter or a domestic violence shelter, someone could probably be there for even up to a year potentially, if you're trying to work on getting that person into something more permanent.
Just for under advisement, you get, when you're dealing with transitional housing and you pass that six-month point, it is pretty difficult legally to move people along out of the transitional housing, being in the transitional housing business for more than two days. We had that issue because at 180-day mark, they become a permanent resident. So you have to be very careful when you, I was working with the Sheriff's Department on that particular item, as I got into transitional housing, because you have to put, whoever is going into that particular endeavor have to understand, once you pass a certain point, you have permanent housing, and that's a whole different beast, if you will, to deal with. And then, of course, the issues of recovery housing, and I see that no license is required, but is the license as far as the requirement in having different types of qualified people there, certified counselors and everything, that doesn't fall under your purview?
Well, again, this is just research, so I don't have any particular direction to provide to you. But what I found was sometimes you have a recovery house. You may have, you don't necessarily have to have someone there licensed to do anything, unless they're providing certain programs that the state might require some kind of license, or maybe it's Medicaid services or some, whatever that might be. So it really depends on what the agency that is running the use there is providing.
So what we would have, the city would fall under state requirements in that particular case. We would not have any requirements of our own as far as the city is concerned.
Well, the city could certainly have additional. If the user or the management of the use is going to be providing services that the state would, in particular, would require some kind of license, they'd have to adhere to that. But that doesn't, I don't think it prevents the city from imposing any kind of performance standards on the zoning for the use, if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from counsel? Members Tocque.
Sorry, question. So with this applicant, are they able to proceed now? Or are they kind of in waiting period until we determine?
Sure. This started out with an application for a permit, and based on the permit that we reviewed, the fire marshal, the building official, and myself had a lot of questions. So that's why, one of the reasons why I'm here with you is because I'm trying to see if maybe we can deal with the question as far as the use, consistent with the permitted uses of zoning. That won't particularly address the fire suppression request or requirement. So they are not able to go forward with what they've submitted so far until we get more clarification as to what they are doing consistent with our zoning.
Are you wanting something more from us right now?
I'm actually asking if maybe you have some input as far as any additional information, which I've already received, it's where else I should be looking. And then maybe if you'd like us to come back to you with some action or maybe provide to you as an informational item on a regular meeting so that you can make an advisability or a direction to us, potentially creating an ordinance, if that's the direction you want us to go.
Yeah, I think that's what I would be curious in, and what type of zoning, like permitted use, and maybe your recommendation on what would require a CUP potentially, those instances. I don't know if that's helpful, but it's kind of, it's a lot to see these different types and to know the whole city, and it's just a lot.
We can certainly come back with some kind of suggestions of where we believe these types of uses. Right now, you got what I believe are transitional housing uses listed inside the downtown mixed-use zoning district. The question I would think is, do you want to expand that definition more broadly, to capture homeless shelters, maybe? And then do you want to expand that in other zoning districts? And if so, are there any particular performance standards that you think are important? And we can certainly explore that. But again, my preliminary research in other jurisdictions, there isn't a very good guidance on this.
Okay.
Brad, even if we expand it, don't expand it, whatever we do, it sounds like there needs to be some discussion on fire suppression, no matter what we decide. We can say expand it, we can say go to this zone, everything's fine, but it sounds like one of the major hurdles you have is fire suppression.
Correct. That's a state requirement, so they're going to, you know, any of these, where you're going to have, what I understand is, based on the information we've received, that this would fall under what's called a boarding facility or a residential board or care occupancy, which under the NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association Code, would require a fire suppression system. So that'd be a use, basically, allowing, you know, several residents to sleep in bedrooms there in this building or a building on a temporary basis, would have to have some kind of system in place.
And no matter what we might discuss or decide, that needs to be remedied before we can say, let's go forward.
Well, I'm not sure that could be remedied, and I guess my point is, no matter what we decide as far as expanding this use, that requirement may still be required no matter what.
I would think. Member Nelson.
Brad, Salvation Army homeless shelter, how was that classified?
I'd like to investigate that one.
Okay, because I'm like, it was a homeless shelter, and so it seems like we would have something there. Please.
We can certainly look into it.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, yes, Brad. As you know, I fought a couple of these battles along the way. And if we're going to give you some advisement, I would, to try to help the individual or the entity that wants to have a homeless shelter and so forth, it's going to be difficult because you're going to have the problem with, the neighborhood is going to receive it. So as you are inquiring into this, and that's a hard issue, because the neighbors may not want a group home or anything else next door to him, and we have to worry about, and I know that the city manager and I attended an affordable housing, that thing, and you just can't stop an individual from living next door to you because you don't, if they have a handicap or something of that nature, you just can't not do that by law. But as you are putting the transitional piece together, and even in the downtown area or the DMU area, you have to make sure that if you're going to zone it the way that it can be used, make sure that you take in consideration the security part of it, distance between A and B as you're going along. And those are the kind of things that I would advise you to take into consideration as you're putting a package together that we can advise you on, because the objections is going to come from the current resident, no matter where you put it. So make sure all of that, as we come up with the direction on how to zone it, where to zone it, we need to have some answers on those particular questions, because that's where the battle is going to come. And that was the greatest battle that I fought over the years when I was coming up with homeless housing. Is, of course, the fancy name of it is NIMBYism, not in my neighborhood, but you have to take that into consideration for security and all those kinds of things as we go along. But transitional housing is, again, put a date on it. If you're going to have that individual or those individuals in the housing more than 180 days, call it something else other than transitional housing, because that's when the difficulties began. All righty?
Anything else from counsel? Brad, thank you very much. I know there's a lot to that, so I appreciate it. City Manager.
Last item is item 4F, which is a comprehensive plan and land development regulations. A presentation will be given by Kimberly Horn on the draft amendments to the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. No actions required, and I think Eliza's here.
Hi, how are you? Good to see you again.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and three council for having me again here tonight. This is our third presentation. So with that, we'll just get into it. To do a little bit of background, as you know, this is our third presentation. The last two presentations focused on visioning studies of three areas of the city, downtown, the neighborhood immediately west of downtown, and what we're calling the gateway corridors, which is the major roads entering the city of Titusville. So what we're talking about today is specific policies related to each of those areas. In your agenda packet is the full document of policies, and what I'll be going through is a high-level overview. Given that I know you have a full agenda tonight, I'll go through this, I'll endeavor to go through this fairly quickly, but if I'm going too fast, please slow me down. And then the other important piece of information here is what will follow on this is land development code updates that more specifically put standards to these policies. And that will come before you, before you are asked to adopt the policies. So generally speaking, we're looking, and as this is structured, to be place-based. So we are studying each of these places and then putting together policies that are very specific to bringing together all the elements that make a place complete, which includes land use, parks, transportation, all of those elements. And moving to this place-based focus also can provide flexibility for changing times because we're focused a little bit less on use-based categories and more on creating that sense of place that maintains character over time. So we're going to start with downtown. So as we previously talked about, the goals for downtown, we're creating that sense of place and identity, walkability, bikeability, attractive green spaces, and a place for business to grow, and understanding the relationship between the adjacent neighborhood. So the objective, that is the overarching, that's the highest level of description that we have in the comprehensive plan for downtown. So this is the headline, if you will. So the old headline is on the bottom. We hope that our new headline is a little bit more inspiring and engaging. So downtown is the heart of Titusville. Downtown should have a memorable identity, foster a variety of activities, and be a great place for people, for a critical mass of people, because it is the center of Titusville, for people to work, live, visit, and enjoy, while still maintaining that small-town ambiance. So then we have a set of policies that implement that general objective. And then within each policy, we have a set of strategies. So this mirrors the way some So this mirrors the way some other chapters of the comprehensive plan are structured. Right now, the, the land use element has mainly just policies, so there's no real hierarchy. So we've tried to create some hierarchy to group together policies that are related. So the first policy is focused on encouraging mixed-use development, which includes residential, civic, and employment for that vibrant, active downtown. Now, to implement that, we've identified a variety of strategies, including adaptive reuse as well as new construction. One of the challenges in terms of doing development in historic towns sometimes is that there's no stormwater. If you have a new planned unit development or a new master planned community, there's a, there's a big stormwater system that's built as part of that. But that wasn't built when downtown Titusville was built. So what we see some communities doing, like this is an image from Cape Canaveral, essentially back-ending some of that stormwater facility into the community rather than trying to deal with it on every single little lot in downtown. So that might, that is one thing to explore moving forward. We've also brought to you a couple of times that Palm Avenue, we think, is an important opportunity because the city doesn't control US-1, but it does control Palm Avenue. So that is an option for thinking about a pedestrian-focused place. And then we also maintained other existing policies that were, that were consistent with that vision. And this is an illustration of what that Palm Avenue streetscape could look like. The next policy here is about creating a diverse residential population. So having people living downtown is really important if you want downtown to be a place that's active all the time, rather than just a place people come to visit and then leave, or come to work and then leave, leaving a lot of hours of the day where there's not necessarily anybody here to caretake that downtown. So to implement that policy, the strategies we've identified are, at base, allowing a variety of topologies. There was some language already in the comp plan about encouraging home, encouraging owner-occupied homes, which is great. Downtown is also a place where people will rent because that's, that's very typical of downtown. So having both is important. And then finally, the, kind of the, one of the bigger elements here is the downtown core overlay. So we talked before about the idea that there's not a lot of big properties in downtown on which a major redevelopment would happen. So our approach here, rather than trying to plant, trying to put policies for, or strategies for all of downtown as if big development is gonna happen on every block, what we've suggested is this overlay. And that comes with a density pool. So essentially, a certain number of units are possible today in the comp plan across all of downtown, but they're not going to be realized on most properties because of the size of those properties and the challenges associating with assembling them. So if anybody does assemble a property into a, into a larger opportunity that would be capable of, of, of reaching what is now allowed in downtown, which is five stories, the only way they could achieve that would be by accessing this density pool. And that would require them giving back to the community by doing things like expanding the public realm on designated streets, essentially expanding people's experience of the sidewalk into their property, providing publicly accessible parking, active ground floor uses. That's a term that we use to talk about a variety of uses, not just retail, but gyms, lobbies, all sorts of visible, active activities that could happen on that ground floor that would keep people comfortable walking down the street all hours of the day. And again, this would be fleshed out in more detail in the land development code. So coming back to Palm Avenue, there's a number of different options for people to opt into that density overlay, but one of them that we mentioned was this enhanced public realm. And we wanted to describe that in a little more detail so people could really understand what we're saying. So if you look at the, and I know I can't point unfortunately, but the, the center is the right-of-way where the thick line is. That's the land that the city owns and controls today. That's the city right-of-way. And within that, you can do some things in terms of, there's a five-foot sidewalk. If you wanna do something like add trees, you would probably have to do some bump outs into the existing asphalt to make room for those trees because you really can't fit them on a, on a five-foot sidewalk. And we would definitely encourage that kind of intervention. However, to the extent that redevelopment is happening, that creates an opportunity to work with that private developer to create more space for that effective sidewalk. And that space could be used by them for things like sidewalk dining, but also to plant some of those trees and just create a more robust sidewalk for, that, that's worthy of a downtown. Policy number three, creating a multimodal environment. This is implementing that bicycle and pedestrian-oriented downtown because that's one of the ways in which you get more activity to be possible in a downtown. And there's a variety of strategies that, that make that possible from having lots of shade from trees and other sources to working on transportation demand management and access to individual properties. And I won't belabor that, given the time. Strategy number four, enhancing the visual attractiveness, streetscapes, public spaces, and gateways. So again, a number of strategies here, but I'll just focus on a couple. On the top right, you see the image that we did of converting the existing city parking lot into a park while replacing those parking spaces in other locations. We think that's a great way to create a significant green space downtown that connects the waterfront to the business district. However, from a policy standpoint, that's not the right place to, to put that in. And we know that there's a lot of questions around whether or not that's exactly the right solution. So the policy that we've written is to create that, what, based on the goals, creating a significant public space in downtown that can be a community gathering space. And ideally, it would connect to the waterfront. So that's what we've written into the, the draft policy for the comprehensive plan. And then, you know, if there's another opportunity to do that, that, that's a better fit, then great. If this is the right fit, then that's great, too. A policy number five under this category, connecting downtown and the waterfront. This really just gathers together some existing policies and, and explains more why they, they make sense together. The downtown sub-districts, again, this is, this already is in the, in the land development code that downtown has these sub-districts. But if you're reading through, it's kind of a surprise because there's nowhere in the comp plan that that's alluded to. So we thought it was important to recognize that in the comp plan, both conceptually and to give people a sense that they should, they need to keep reading, essentially. So that's it for downtown Titusville. Moving into the urban mixed-use, land use category, which, a portion of which is what we're calling West Titusville. Now, I wanna talk a little bit about the name West Titusville. That's a working title, if you will. We, we think it would be important to engage more with the community and find a, a community adopted name for that area. But we've been using the, the compass to refer to it because we need something, some way to refer to it. And that neighborhood west of downtown is an awful mouthful. So we, we would, we've talked with Brad already about having additional community engagement to work on that name. So the objective here, again, the headline is, "The city shall have vibrant urban neighborhoods that accommodate a variety of household types and uses and provide for everyday needs within walking distance." So this urban mixed-use category does apply in a few additional categories within the city, sorry, within a few additional geographic areas within the city. We believe that the policies we've written are compatible with those areas, but we focused most of our attention on this West Titusville neighborhood. So policy one is existing, so I won't, won't, won't spend time on that. Policy two is about encouraging neighborhood-serving mixed-use. So we've talked a lot about that having mixed uses is great within walking distance if it's a use that you're going to use. So some of the industrial uses, for instance, that are existing in the neighborhood aren't necessarily ones that the neighbors are using who live there. So over time, trying to encourage more mixed use to come in that is the type that the neighbors would, would wanna see come in and would use on a regular basis is really the goal. Strategy three, this again is primarily existing strategies, but essentially because there are those existing industrial uses having in the comp plan that need to create some screening and buffering between those uses. We also added parking areas because even in otherwise innocuous commercial uses, screening those parking areas is typically important to residents. Policy number four, this is acknowledging that unique relationship because downtown and West Titusville are closely connected geographically. They have connectivity from a road network standpoint. There's, there's a real opportunity here to, both an opportunity and a reality that what happens in downtown affects West Titusville and what happens in West Titusville affects downtown. And that, understanding that is important to planning for this area. So there's an existing policy that recognizes that, talking about linking the Main Street corridor, which is both in West Titusville and downtown. Of course, we need to define what we mean by West Titusville. We showed this last time, but this is the existing future land use map for West Titusville on the left and the proposed on the right. Essentially taking those properties outside the DMU, which is the downtown mixed-use zone, and making them one consistent land use for the whole area. Now, I would note on the bottom there, there's a lot of residential zones. Not all, but a significant amount of that area is vacant. There's some that I believe is owned by, owned by housing. So the, the housing authority, so there's not, you know, a complete residential neighborhood that we're proposing to change the zoning on, or the comp plan on. Looking at strategies, this would be very consistent with what we've, we presented before for the most part, encouraging a variety of housing types. We've shown you the typology on the right before, which is a, a small-scale mixed-use housing topology that has a couple of residential units and a small business opportunity. We're also proposing a residential density bonus of five units per acre for providing those public benefits, similar to what we're talking about downtown, but at a much more modest scale and with some specific, some specifics around the designated streets on which you would get credit for, for participating in this. Because for instance, the active ground floor use, the kind of retail-like use, is really helpful on some streets and not necessarily something the city wants to actively encourage on other streets. So on Main Street, this is a, a very similar diagram to what we showed you on Palm Avenue. This is how Main Street could be expanded through partnership with private property owners by using that essentially extended sidewalk space to provide the opportunity to plant more trees as well as more maneuvering space for people walking sidewalk and sidewalk activities. So for, in terms of transportation, we, the policy here is focused on safe local mobility, especially very low speeds. If it's a place where your kids are playing, you want people to be driving very slowly because, A, you want people, you wanna not have a crash in the first place. And if, God forbid, there is a crash, you want it, you want everybody to come out. So those slow speeds is what helps that happen. The next policy, and this again is a gathering together a lot of existing policies with a few, or existing strategies with a few new strategies. This is about facilitating improvements that help both existing and new residents participate in the benefits of their revitalization. So one, one thing that we, we've added here is the idea of canopy trees within the neighborhood. There's actually a national conversation going around about equity in trees because a lot of times lower-income neighborhoods or, or disinvested neighborhoods don't have a significant tree canopy as compared to other neighborhoods within cities. And so there's a need to provide some, some balance there. And often that requires public investment to make that happen. We've also added strategies here around shared infrastructure, kind of what we're talking about with the, the, the stormwater, the big park that we showed in the previous section in downtown, but at a much smaller scale, potentially. And a mix of subsidized and market-rate housing. We know that there, there is publicly-owned lots in that area that may have a future as subsidized housing, so recognizing that as well. And then the last couple of, the last few policies here under urban mixed-use, I'm just going through very quickly. So the first one is about encouraging open space, recreation, and natural. Public access to natural amenities was already a policy and we just expanded on that, including preserving existing water accessways and connecting neighborhoods to each other. Now, as you recall, I said this urban mixed-use applies to some other neighborhoods, too, where I think some of the waterway, existing waterway access policy is more relevant because there's not existing waterway in West Titusville, but there, there are in some other areas of the city that have an urban mixed-use designation. And then finally, gateway, the gateway corridor overlay. Again, these are the goals that we previously shared about the gateway corridors. The idea here is, this is the face of the city. As people are entering it, typically they are driving in and they're seeing the, their first impression of the city comes through these gateway corridors. So the, the headline here is, these gateways are critical to the city's image and they should accommodate a variety and intensity of landing uses while having a great visual identity. To implement that, we first have to define what the gateway corridors are, which we do on this slide. US-1, Garden Street, South Street, Cheney, and 407, within certain land use categories. Particularly, we're excluding the DMU, which already has its own set of policies in the downtown, as well as some other potentially incompatible designations. This is an illustration of Garden Street that we showed previously. Garden Street's actually wide enough that we can do a lot of good things within the existing right-of-way, especially if that FDOT study continues and looks at some lane reassignment. And this is the visual there. So the, the policy here about, is about consistent and attractive appearance. So that means things like landscape, tree planting, maintenance, and signage. Those are the, the kind of interventions that are recognized by the policy and would be implemented through the land development code. And then the next policy has to do with development. So we showed these redevelopment scenarios earlier on one particular property on the site. There's not, again, there's not a lot, a lot of these larger properties that would accommodate redevelopment at this scale. So we've gone, again, with an overlay approach where city council would, would review these to some extent on a case-by-case basis, but with a set of parameters that, that we're looking for and what we, what we view as a positive outcome. So the intent here is to encourage development and redevelopment, and particularly mixed-use development. The uses would be commercial, multifamily. And there would be incentive bonuses, again, for contributions to the public realm. They look different in this type of development because it is on a larger roadway. They're more internal to the development property necessarily than, than, than directly related to the roadway and the way they are in the downtown area. But they do include things like green infrastructure, bicycle pedestrian infrastructure, exceeding, of course, the, the standards that everybody else has to meet if they're getting this bonus. But there is an inherent benefit in encouraging housing in the, on these opportunity sites to increase opportunity for housing within the city as, in, in a different format. And there would also be necessity for transitions if there's existing neighborhoods that are adjoining these properties, there'd be a need to transition to those by stepping down. South Street, another example. This is one where the public realm actually would be an issue because, again, it has a very narrow sidewalk. So there'd be an interest in expanding that if one of these properties wanted to redevelop using this tool. And I jumped ahead a little bit on policy four. Housing supply is a concern and this is one of the opportunities to address it. So as we said, these policies are closely linked, so I really kind of addressed that on the previous slide. The other, the other issue, of course, as you're talking about having more people living in these corridors as well as more development, having usable open space is really important. Not just green space that's nice to look at from a distance, but places that people can actually inhabit and enjoy. And we know that, that having clear standards for what that means is important. Otherwise, you get just that weird green triangle on the corner of the property that counts as a park. The policy six, so this is our, our transportation policy for this area. It basically recognizes that these are important motor vehicle travel ways, of course, and that movement is important and operations to maintain traffic flow are important. But there are also opportunities to make sure that there are options for people walking and biking, biking to do so safely and to cross the road safely. And with that, that's the, that's the summary. Happy to take any questions on the presentation or the document.
Well, it's always a, a very good presentation with, with lots of visionary stuff. But as I sit here and listen and wonder, ultimately what, and this may be a whole nother conference that we don't need to get into today, but ultimately, what are we looking to do with this thing? Where are we going with this? What do we need to do and how do we, are these just ideas right now? Are these just thoughts, or this is what we wanna do and we're heading that way?
So if you adopt these policies, then that would enable a couple of things. In, in some cases, it would enable specific types of development that would not be permitted today, coupled with the land development code. Including, for instance, in downtown, the buildings are allowed to go to five stories, but the densities on the books would never allow that to actually happen. So there's a disconnect between what the city has said is allowed in downtown and what can actually happen from a residential standpoint. Now, an office could happen in downtown at five stories, but there's not a huge office market, even in some of the more central downtown locations. And then it would also direct the city staff to look at some opportunities around, say, the stormwater. We've had some background conversations about the possibilities for an integrated stormwater system. Of course, that would require a lot of next steps, but the policies would set that in motion to do further study. And ultimately, of course, any sort of investment would have to be approved by council.
Okay. Thank you, council. Anything? Members, Stokel?
This is a question for Brad. What is the process for doing amendments to our comp plan, and how frequently are we allowed to do that?
We do it anytime we want, but a text amendment like this would have to go to the state for a review. They would review it, see if there's an impact to a state interest. We would get it back, and then you would do another round of hearings for adoption. So the comp plan policies, if these are adopted, then it'll just trigger the next step, which is looking at our code to see what we need to do to update it, to be consistent to implement these policies.
Okay. So oftentimes, we'll hear during a council meeting, it's not consistent with our comp plan. So if we have issues with our comp plan, we can change it at any time. Once the comp plan is changed, then any ordinances that we pass need to be consistent with that comp plan.
Correct.
So I think to that point would be, is depending on what we feel comfortable with, with these three areas, work on potentially making those adjustments, and then that may trigger some ordinance changes after that.
Correct.
Okay.
And we actually, unless you want to let us out, we have drafting LDC, proposed LDC amendments as part of this exercise. They wouldn't make sense to adopt them until the comp plan comes back for adoption, but you will be able to see what the consistent LDC standards would be for these specific areas.
So the next step is sometime this summer, I think late July, early August, we're going to bring you a final draft of this comp plan policies with a draft of the code changes that we propose with it.
So in the meantime, be looking at what's presented here that we have in our packet and be thinking about which ones we like, don't like, maybe want to modify until then.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
And I just have a question because I'm trying to wrap my head around it. And I look at West Titusville, and you've got some old houses out there along Main Street, Tropic. And so when I look at your proposal for Main Street, I sort of have a disconnect. You know, what about the old houses that are historical? So what do we do there?
So the city does have a separate section of policies related specifically to historic preservation, and this wouldn't change that. The, I would note that very often, the setback that we're showing might even be accommodated by an existing building, although it wouldn't necessarily make sense for them to partner for the extra density if they, it would be, but it would be possible to do much of this on a parcel-by-parcel basis. It wouldn't require everything being consistent across the corridor.
I guess I just look at it and I go, you've got a lot of historical houses there. And so do we want to do something like the Garden Street frontage? And I'm thinking, not particularly in that area. That's my, that's my thought.
Well, those are two different areas. You're talking about the sketch that was shown about Garden Street is more related to the downtown and commercial quarters versus the study that was done by the consultant on the neighborhood west of the CRA. That was a different, so they're looking at different typologies, different frontages, different standards there.
Okay.
This is a different type of area.
Yeah.
Member Cole?
As a part of your engagement, do you come up with cost estimates for the various aspects of what you have proposed?
So much of what we proposed is affecting private development, so that wouldn't have a direct cost to the city. But no, at this stage, we don't provide specific cost estimates because we're at 50,000 feet and there's a few steps between.
Right, I understand that, but my question was the end result. Do we get cost estimates for what you have, the various segments of what you have proposed?
Well, let's say, for example, so you get, we have the policies in place and the overlay tool in place, and someone, private property owner decides to utilize it. So they're using one of the strategies, incentives, to be able, will allow you this density or whatever tools there, and then you need to provide this. That's a negotiation with the city, so if it includes some kind of infrastructure that the city needs to provide or need to accommodate, or the property owner's going to be doing that and that we maintain, that's typical with development that we deal with now.
What I'm, I guess, I understand that aspect of it, but my question is more along the lines of you showed tree plantings and you showed islands in the middle of the street and those kinds of things. Those would be our responsibility though, right?
Depends on how the tool is developed. So it could be a system where you have the right-of-way use agreements, where you have a private property and maintaining that infrastructure in front of them inside their cities right-of-way. That's one possibility, but there's many ways that this can be done.
And let me also add that there's, we're coupling here the vision and the policies. The vision is more aggressive than the policies, so, you know, the drawings that you saw won't be adopted there, or at least it won't be adopted as comp plan.
No, I understand, yes, okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I understand that pretty well. What I get out of this is that Titusville is going to look different in the future, and we want to set up our, or everything to keep control of what Titusville is going to look in the future. Of course, I know your rendition that you put isn't going to look nothing basically like Titusville, but it does prepare our minds to settle in on the fact that 10 years from now, 20 years from now, we want to make sure that all of our, you know, we have zoned everything to match the future. And what we can do and what we can't do, what the community will not accept and what it will accept, and that's what we're here for, is to look at what you are offering us and say, okay, these are some good ideas, but it's a lot of hands that these ideas have to go through before we can make a true decision on what it's, what's going to be. But yes, it's going to look different in the future, and we want to kind of, we want to try to control what it's going to look like in the future and be prepared for those changes. Is that correct? That's the idea, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. And I think we're done up here, so thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it, and I know we'll see each other again. Anything else, Brad?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. City manager, I'm just curious, normally when we have CRA, there's certainly the topics of petitions requests may be limited. In this case, do we just roll on like it doesn't matter? I mean, I don't care, it's going to petition request an hour later, but it's just, it's very odd. I mean, we're two and a half, you know, we're way past this hour meeting.
Correct. What's unique about the presentations, of course, is we do not take cards, but we do allow the petitions at the end, and a lot of the statements may have to do with the presentations we just had. So I would take the cards in this meeting.
Right, I get that, but I'm not talking about cards now, I'm talking about just petitions or requests.
I shouldn't say cards. I would take petitions or requests now if you want to take a break and do those and then start the next meeting, but I would have the comments that related to the presentation meeting at this time.
Okay. I guess what he's saying is, because this is a little bit different for us, presentation, meeting, comments is what we're looking at here? Yes? Okay. And then, of course, there's a petition.
Right, this would be the petitions or requests for the 5:30 portion of the meeting.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify, some people might not know that we're not on our second meeting yet.
Yeah, that's true too. You might think we're in the second meeting, we're still in the first one. So let's just go ahead and see what happens. So petitions or requests for the 5:30 meeting.
Tony Shifalo, the Historic Norwood House, Tropic Street. I must apologize to council and to Kane and Associates for my emotional outburst at the April 25th special meeting when the vision for our future was unveiled. To me, these visions came out of the blue, and research revealed why. Most all of the meetings involving the public were held prior to my moving to Titusville in mid-2018. Today, as a resident owner of one of 12 locally-designated historic structures in town, I'm especially interested in preserving not only the historic downtown within the CRA, but the established neighborhood of mostly single-family residences west of the tracks where my historic home is located. It seems lately there's a flurry of reports and summaries of planning sessions and resulting visions for the city from meetings held prior to the COVID recess. There's the Economic Development Strategy Plan, there's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Housing Incentive Plan, the Titusville Tomorrow Vision Plan to revise the City Comprehensive Plan, and the Neighborhood Services with a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Plan that have all been planned much prior to public input. Now, all speak directly to my neighborhood, Census Track 607 Blocks 1 and 2. So now, I've read all these plans, and I'm prepared to guard against gentrification of this established, though economically depressed and predominantly African-American, West Titusville neighborhood. Based on the interrelatedness of many of the components of each of these plans, such as the urban forest and tree equity, also the conservation of green spaces and natural habitats within the city, I urge council members to study all these plans, as I have, to formulate a cohesive plan with action steps that not only educate and inform the public and the citizens, but further involves our participation both in updating these plans and the implementation action, and to participate in the actual evaluation of these plans. Also, consider widely publicizing opportunities and broadcasting all public sessions for maximizing public participation in forming the city in which we live. So again, my apologies for my outburst last time. I was unprepared, but I'm ready now.
Oh, girl. Petitions or requests, Stan, you better, never mind, you're too slow.
I'll be very, be very brief. Jim Ball, 921 Indian River Avenue. So I'm only going to make a few remarks in relationship to Titusville Playhouse. We have two and a half acres in one of the target areas, so our two and a half acres front on both Palm and on Julia. And I want to actually compliment staff and the consultant. We attended the public meeting that was held out at the Senior Center. It was widely advertised. I'm sure a number of people didn't see it, but it was pretty well-attended. And so I think that the consultant and staff have done a good job thus far from what I can see in engaging interested stakeholders. And I'll only speak from our standpoint that what we've seen, a lot of meat still to come onto the board on the bones, so to speak, but we are comfortable with where this is headed with respect to Palm and Julia. We think it's very much aligned with what our future vision is, and we're at such an early state, we're more than happy to work with this plan as it looks to have wider sidewalks, streetscaping, that sort of thing. We're not volunteering to pay for it, but I think there is a way that we can work with it, and all I wanted to do was relate that as a significant property owner in one of the target areas, we're pretty comfortable with where it's going.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Nick Herring. I represent the Framework Group, 1211 Northwest Shore Boulevard, Suite 802 in Tampa. Mr. Mayor, I might have an answer to one of your questions. Where's the city of Titusville going with this comprehensive plan amendment? We are here, we are multifamily developers based in Tampa. We are here because you're considering this. Our work spans a wide variety of architecture, sizes, shapes, and even price points, but in all cases, we focus on high-quality rental housing that meets the unique needs of a market with attention to detail, attention to design, and what makes a space special. We are lovers of the Space Coast. We have active developments in Cocoa, Cocoa Beach, and hopefully soon in Merritt Island. We are lovers of downtowns. We are urban infill developers at heart, and we've participated in the revitalization of downtowns around the state of Florida, places like Tampa, Sarasota, City of Daytona Beach, Lakeland, and as far as Spartanburg, South Carolina, and Augusta, Georgia. That's what we love to do, and that's what I want to talk with you about tonight. I want to continue our work on the Space Coast. We want to do that in downtown Titusville. And just want to explain briefly what could be possible under the comprehensive plan amendment that you're currently considering, because at the moment, I'd have, I see what I would call a mismatch in zoning in the current code. Current code allows for five stories and 30 dwelling units per acre. Now, 30 dwelling units is not likely going to entice any developers. That would occupy about 20% of a one-acre block. The remainder of that would likely be surface parking, not ideal in a downtown location. But if allowable density were brought more into an agreement with allowable height that already exists in the zoning code at five stories with something like a pool density concept that's being discussed, things get a lot more interesting. We can create interesting streetscapes, courtyards, in the right situations, we can create structured parking, and we can conceal it. And we can do that all in the five-story street wall that's already permissible. Now, the very best part is that spells more residents for downtown, more full-time workers, patrons for your shops, restaurants, things of that nature. We have done this before. Framework development in downtown Sarasota called Arcos was in response to Rosemary District Density Overlay that increased its density in about 2015. We took notice of that. We developed 228 apartments in five stories with the active ground floor uses that were mentioned here today, a lobby, a gym, an onsite art gallery, and it is the vision that we would like to bring to Titusville should we see this going forward. So thank you for listening, and we look forward to taking part in the discussion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Stan, you're struggling out there, boy.
Mayor, good evening, council members.
Yes, sir, how are you?
Tom Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue. Yesterday, Monday, May 22nd, Senior Circuit Court Judge Charles Holcomb provided his ruling on the Right to Clean Water case. The ruling denied a declaratory judgment filed by the city of Titusville. The ruling granted Speak Up Titusville the request that the city be required to certify the amendment, and the request to declare any violation of the federal constitution or that section of the Florida statutes is unconstitutional be denied. It would be constructive to recap how we got here. About two years ago, a group of Titusville citizens came together to provide the citizenry with the chance to place on the ballot the Right to Clean Water Amendment to the city's charter. The required number of petitions were collected and submitted to the supervisory elections which placed the Right to Clean Water on the November 22 ballot. Over 82% of the citizens voted in favor of the ballot, as you know. The people overwhelmingly expressed their wishes. The city elected not to certify the citizens' ballot for the right to clean water and to challenge its constitutionality. Now, our lawyers don't get paid much, as much as yours, but they are the best. It's supposed to be funny. Okay. Seriously, though, my point is this, we did the work, and we knew that legally we stood on solid ground. We weren't wasting anybody's time. Why did you not know it as well? Was there an underlying motive or intent? A read of the 12-page judgment makes clear that a lot of time and money has been squandered. We now have the opportunity to move on. The question is, what will you do now? Will you honor and respect the 14,967 citizens who voted for the Right to Clean Water? Don't spend any more of the taxpayers' money on legal fees. We need that money to do countless other things, more important things in this city. I challenge you to do the right thing. I have a statement that was submitted by Maureen Rup that I'd like to read. She asked me to read it for you. Dear Titusville City Council, the Titusville Right to Clean Water Charter Amendment Initiative agrees with the Florida State Constitution enforcing the right of Floridians to a clean and environment. The Florida Supreme Court in its Florida Wildlife Federation versus state decision in 1980, 403.412, Parent 2A, the citizens of Florida have been given the capacity to protect their rights to clean, to a clean environment, a right not previously afforded them directly.
Can you finish her in 30?
Yeah. In addition...
30 seconds.
The policy conserving and protecting natural resources is set by Article 11, Section 78 in the Florida Constitution. There are more Florida general laws specifically providing for local governments to abate water pollution, including by judicial enforcement. The right of the people to clean water should not have come to a city council. Denying this right to any living creature is undeniable. For the sake of the city's reputation, please do not try to appeal this addition to the Titusville Charter sincerely, Maureen Rup. One individual asked, "Why does city council get to use the voters' tax money to pay lawyers to fight against what over 80% of the voters voted for?" They are supposed to represent the voters. If the city council wants to fight against the voters, they should pay lawyers with their own money. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. (APPLAUSE).
Well, I told Maureen I was going to read her email, but I guess Tom beat me to it, so...
Tom's on it.
No point in being redundant. Michael Myjak, Titusville. So, your question was, is it constitutional? It is. We found many cities that did what you did, although in different ways. They would not provide a ballot summary. They would not review the ballot summary even though you're constitutionally obligated to provide that. If you don't provide the ballot summary, you can't choose or sue us for not providing one. But we did. That smacks of dirty hands to me, that the city would cause us to spend tens of thousands of dollars to do what the state required us to do, which was stand up a corporation to put forward a petition to get it on the ballot. And you guys are supposed to administratively do so so that we can vote on it when we met the criteria. And you didn't. You fought us. Are we done? Can we accept this now? The vote of the people? And put the Right to Clean Water in Titusville's charter so that we can go forward with that as part of our mantra? Because the Right to Clean Water is why these people are here, you know? We want to see the city do the right thing by our lagoon, and I know you guys want to as well. But we need bold change to make that happen. I've mentioned it before, and those of us on the TEC have also talked about it, and that's the idea of re-diverting our stormwater from the lagoon into the storied wetlands that we have. And that includes the green spaces that we have through Royal Love Country Club. That could become Titusville's Central Park. Rather than taking away our Save-A-Lot on Highway 50 or removing our parking lot here downtown, we could be doing something that would grow with this city for 100 years. Water quality is almost meaningless because it has so many different definitions. We need to understand that fresh water is poisonous in quantities that we're delivering to our estuary. It's not allowing things to come back. Seagrass is slow. Clams evaporated. The salinity isn't high enough. That's what we need to do. Please, accept this.
Thanks, Mike.
Hi, this is Marla Spreckel. I live at 3 Indian River Avenue in Titusville. One of my favorite people in history is Aldo Leopold. Aldo Leopold said, and I quote, "Ethical behavior is doing the right thing when no one else is watching, even when doing the wrong thing is legal." He was a famous American writer, a philosopher, a naturalist, and a scientist. He was a professor at the University of Wisconsin and is best known for his book Sand County Almanac, published in 1949, which has been translated into 14 languages and has sold more than 2 million copies. He was a very wise man. Now, I looked at the judgment we got from the lawyers, and there are a couple of things I wanted to point out. The first matter raised by the city is that the statement in the ballot summary does not clearly disclose the primary or chief purpose of the proposed amendment. The court, which means the judge, does not find it ambiguous or unclear, and finds that it properly discloses the main or chief purpose of the proposed amendment. In addition, the court finds that it does not and did not mislead the public. In another spot, he said, "The term 'natural environment,'" with quotes around it, "in the statute, is not unconstitutionally vague. Natural environment defines itself and is not likely to confuse or deceive anyone of voting age who have all their faculties intact." The judge ruled, "The other claims of vagueness in the argument are without merit and will not be discussed. The addition of the proposed amendment approved by a majority vote of the voters in Titusville leaves only a ministerial duty to certify the amendment. The law reserves to the people the right to amend the city charter without the approval of and even in the fact of vehement objection from the government body." And there's case law to show that. I urge you to honor and respect the 14,967 Titusville citizens who voted for this amendment.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Klein, 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. The city of Titusville is acting like Don Quixote tilting at windmills. Don Quixote is a classic novel which portrays the life and insightful journey of Don Quixote de la Mancha, a Spanish man who seems to be losing his mind on his quest to become a knight and restore civility alongside with a farmer named Sancho Panzas, with whom he fights multiple imaginary enemies. The city of Titusville acts like they are a knight in armor, charging ahead of staff with the courts, using the courts like a lance to attack Speak Up Titusville instead of the windmill. They have nothing to gain, no matter who wins. Speak Up Titusville is an imaginary enemy that has no authority or control over what the city of Titusville does. There is nothing to gain by suing Speak Up Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. (APPLAUSE). You all messing with Stan today.
Good evening. Kristin Lorti, Cocoa resident, Brevard County Advocate and supporter of the Right to Clean Water. And I want to tie in with this presentation, this particular petitions and requests is about this, the presentation. And Member Stokel asked the question, "How can we protect the lagoon?" And the speaker said that the number-one way to protect the lagoon is to improve the water quality. And you all have the opportunity to do that directly by supporting the Right to Clean Water, as the citizens have already requested so eloquently in, in what they made so far. There was a couple of points I had. Here we go. Which is, one, please certify the results of the election. Two, honor and respect the 14,967 voters of the city of Titusville that voted to pass the amendment. Number three, stop spending money on unnecessary legal fees. And number four, please work with the citizens to protect the Right to Clean Water for the residents of Brevard and setting example, residents of Titusville, setting an example for the rest of Brevard. I wanted to comment, so I'm a strong supporter of that. These comments were so great. I, I, there's, there's, I'm sure plenty to add, but I like to speak on a couple of these other topics. One is on the update on the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and then also on the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations, echoing what Ms. Shifalo said. The inclusion of citizens in the process really matters, and, and the way that the city goes about it really matters because for various of the, various funding initiatives, for example, tonight, on the, on, one of the items is under the CBDG Grant Program, and there's a required process for engaging citizens. And that can get tucked into all of the paperwork, but the city of Titusville has an opportunity to really promote the opportunity for public engagement. What could that look like? The city currently does not post these, post the opportunities for public engagement on its own Facebook page. The city currently does not respond to citizens who place comments on any other topic on the city Facebook page. Those are two opportunities for, for citizen engagement, and when there are any, anything that the city is looking for input in, putting it out on the city webpage and on the city Facebook page offers that opportunity for engagement. I have personally put together other examples of citizen engagement and opportunities in a proposal that I've recently sent to you on May 10th with the TEC, and I'm probably going to talk about this more at the, at the second time, but I want to mention that Titusville has an opportunity to develop more meaningful citizen engagement to support its own goals. Number one, under Quality of Life, says, "Continue initiatives and actions to improve the Indian River lagoon." And in several of the initiatives that I have presented to you, it will offer that, including making sure that we get timely access to the meeting materials, which I've also sent you via email.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah, 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 hold up. Member Stokel.
Yep, just a quick question. I know you had emailed us as well. Do you know which cities or, and/or the county are posting their full agendas right now on their website?
Cocoa does.
Cocoa does, okay.
And the, I follow, the four that I follow the most are you guys, the county, City of Cocoa, and City of Cape Canaveral. They all put their full board packets. They all make their meeting materials available online. I had to wait, I, I tried to request on Friday morning. I didn't get the packet. I'm not prepared for this meeting because I couldn't get the packet till Monday.
And we used to, and there was good reason why we did remove it, but we made, I don't know. I, I'd be interested in discussion about potentially putting it back up, so...
It would be very helpful for residents to get informed, because you guys talk about wanting to inform us. Let's see it in, in real action. Thanks.
Yep, I agree. Stan, it's too late.
Stan Johnston. Here, I'm, I've been here about over, I've been here over 50 years. I had my, I have five generations of my family here and five generations of my wife's family here, and now I found out tonight that I live in west, west Titusville. And the lady, the lady who said that, which we're paying Kimberly Horne maybe $100,000 for this study, she left. She left. She left. So what's going on? This is kind of an insult to our money, money being spent. In other words, the person we're talking about, things like she just talked about, she left. She left. I don't think you heard it. She left. City manager, she left. Planning department? The person with Kimberly Horne, she's gone. Why did she leave? We have, we have comments and so forth. I, I even sent, put a card out for that, for that item. She's gone. What's going on here? Okay. As you know, I, I, I'm not too popular around here, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm here to talk especially to the people here, not to you guys, because you've heard me tell it before, tell it before. And what's going on is what happened. We had alarms going off. We had alarm, red lights flashing and so forth, alarms going off in the neighborhood. Sewer's lift station wasn't working. Sewers overflowing, overflowing into the streets. Nine city streets. In fact, you know what I did? I even put, I put, I put red signs about this same, this same sewage spill. I put red signs up. Sewer spill. I put them on, on, on Pastor Robinson's church. I put it on my church. I put it on, on over a dozen churches. I put it on City Hall. You know what happens after I did that? The city hall, city manager says, "The sewage spill never happened. It never happened. We had alarms going off. We have all kinds of photos and witnesses and videotapes and so forth like that." And the city manager says, "It never happened." He denies it, "It never happened." You talk about somebody who is being absolutely foolish. Nonsense. Liars, cheats. This is a serious matter. Nine city streets, alarms going off and everything else, all kinds of city employees out there and so forth, all kinds of calls to the city according to neighbors. And what does the city do? They deny it again. They deny it happened. So there was no warning, no warning to people. We had, we had a sewage spray going on at, at the senior park and so forth, and yet the city denies all this. What, what should we say? Is, is with all these facts and stuff, you guys are dishonest? Yeah, it's false reports. I'd like at least another three minutes, please.
I see none, sir.
Well, how about you?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Anybody else?
Straighten up.
We got a couple. We got a couple. Long time. How are you?
Yeah, long time. Good evening. Stell Bailey, Cocoa, Florida, nationally-recognized environmental health advocate. I wanted to come up here and first and foremost say congratulations to Speak Up Titusville for your victory in court on the Right to Clean Water. And I wanted to speak on that and, and ask you guys to certify those votes. The people of Titusville have shown resilience. They had to go out and organize. They were out in that heat gathering signatures, and the voters, this is what they wanted. Even through the challenges that they faced, they proved that when people come together, they, they get what they really, really, really want when they get those signatures, and they got this, and they voted for it. This is a process that should be certified and build confidence in the local government. This is a time for healing. Our waterways is our economy. Our waterways is our food. Our waterways is our health. And no development, no growth within buildings and putting in pretty trees are going to mean anything if people have to walk underneath those trees and smell sewage. So please certify the votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Hilton, 3100 Demerit Drive. And yes, this does attain to what you guys had on the agenda. I am just going to shoot straight. Would you please quit using the term nimbyism? It's not benefiting anybody.
The term what now?
Nimbyism.
I don't know that word.
In regards to, and I emailed both of you in regards to this, I did not hear back from either of you. The nimbyism is a colloquialism for not in my backyard. It's honestly the equivalent of stating racism in a people group, of which you're entitled to your opinion. You truly are. And I understand your background with the homeless and how much you've helped them, and I understand you want to represent them well. But we don't feel represented when you're using this term. We do not feel, and it's out of order with your Code of Ordinances. Article 2, Section 227 says, "The members of city council shall conduct themselves with dignity and fairness for all concerned, so as to reflect the high honor and responsibilities of their public office." Section 2116 Declaration of the Policy says, "The people have the right, the people, whether you think we're that or not, we are, whether you have an opinion of us or not, that's okay. You're allowed to have that. But the people have the right to expect that every public official and employee will conduct themselves in a manner that will tend to preserve public confidence and in respect for the government that they represent." Item B says, "Such confidence and respect in local government can best be promoted if every public official and employee will uniformly treat all of their citizens with courtesy, impartiality, fairness, and equality under the law." Cross-reference Florida Statute Law 112 dot 311. We do not feel... We do not feel, when you use this term, and I'm, I'm venturing to say, just cut it. Because if, what you guys were just talking about with transitional housing and the homeless, you're going to have people who are going to want to know what's going on. You can't just state nimbyism. It would be the equivalent of questions being asked and just stating racism, honestly. So just please, that's what we're asking, stop so that we feel like we're being treated with dignity and fairness when we come to you with questions. We just have questions, and we have no transparency from our city council of what's going on in certain things and the developments that are going to be coming soon. So we are just asking questions. So please, please, stop using the term nimbyism. That's all.
Anybody else saw this one? All right, that was a good, long one. I'd say Tentile. Tentile, we will have the next meeting at Tentile. Thank you.